A call to the order, a call to order, the April 24th, 2018, Port Orchard City Council Regular Meeting. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
So, Mayor Rob Tonso is in, I believe, Mexico, enjoying himself, so I will be acting as Mayor Pro Tem tonight. The first thing that needs to occur is an executive session for 10 minutes pursuant to RCW 42.30.110.1.1 regarding potential litigation with possible action. Back on the record, item is approval of the agenda.
Pro Tem would like to add an amendment to tonight's agenda, adding a business item 7I, and the subject would be interim ordinance self-storage facilities and self-storage overlay map.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? With that, we'll hold a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We're now to-
I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor, or any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved and set. Now, we're on to citizen comments. The next, the public comment period is limited to items on the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council, please raise your hand and acknowledge and step to the microphone and state your name for the record. Seeing none, let's move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, consent agenda passes. There are no scheduled presentations tonight, nor any scheduled public hearings, so we'll move into the first, business item 7A, and let me catch up. Okay, business item 7A is an ordinance amending the 2017-2018 biennial budget. And, Mr. Crocker?
Good evening, and thank you, Council Mayor Deener, Pro Tem, and council members. I'm gonna start off with business item 7A. In summary, the city budget is written to capture revenue and expenses over the fiscal period. During the biennial period, changes to the budget in both revenue and expenses need to be recognized by budget amendment. The city passed ordinance 021-17 issuing $5,865,000 of LTGO bonds to provide funds to pay for a portion of the Tremont widening project, including making certain improvements to the Tremont Street and related public infrastructure, to pay for the city's share of costs of various utility underground projects and other capital projects, and to pay the cost of issuance of the sale of the bonds. Ordinance 021-17, Section 1V defines projects as meaning "the Tremont widening project, including making certain improvements to the Tremont Street and related public infrastructure and other capital purposes as deemed necessary and advisable by the city." The city passed ordinance 025-17 adding revenue from bond funds in the amount of $5.8 million for a portion of the Tremont widening construction project in the Street Capital Construction Fund Number 304. Bond proceeds have certain expenditure and spending requirements and expectations to be exempt from yield restrictions. The city is constructing McCormick Woods Park Phase II and awarded a construction contract of approximately $1.3 million at the April 10th, 2018 council meeting. The contract was approximately $365,000 more than those funds budgeted in the original 2017-18 biennial budget. McCormick Woods Park project is currently funded with real estate excise taxes, park impact fees, and state RCO grant funds. The McCormick Woods Park project is included in the city's capital parks plan and is considered a capital purpose and deemed necessary and advisable by the city, thus making it an eligible project as defined by ordinance 021-17 for bond proceeds. The Tremont widening construction project is in the city's transportation plan and is eligible for real estate excise tax. In order to accomplish two goals of meeting bond spending requirements and fully funding the McCormick Woods Park project, the Finance Department recommends appropriating bond funds for the McCormick Woods Park project and appropriate real estate excise taxes for the Tremont widening project. The Tremont widening project will continue to be funded at the same level, and the bond proceeds will be used to fund and complete the McCormick Woods Park project. The city wishes to properly allocate bond funds and debt for the storm drainage portion of this Tremont widening construction project to the storm drainage utility. The funds will be moved from the Street Capital Projects Fund Number 304 to the Storm Drainage Utility Fund Number 421, and the expense for 2018 debt payments will be realigned appropriately. Lastly, the contract for the Well 9 project was awarded at the April 10th, 2018 council meeting. This contract is approximately $239,000 more than the amount contemplated in the 2017-2018 biennial budget. A transfer from the cumulative reserve of Water Sewer Fund Number 403 to the Water Sewer Utility Fund 401 is needed to accommodate the contract price. Now, at this time, rather than walk through the individual items identified here in the budget amendment, I'd like to kind of take a higher look and provide a summary to the full council of what these individual transactions mean. In this ordinance, it gets a little complex and a little hard to actually understand what's being done. So again, I wanted to roll this up to a higher level that I think makes sense for the public to understand, as well as the council, about what this overall budget amendment is doing. All right, we'll see if this works. There we go. Okay. So I'm gonna start with an overall summary slide. Again, this budget amendment, the full detail is all laid out here, but again, I wanted to roll this up so that it makes sense from a conversational standpoint. We have four identified activities occurring with this budget amendment. First is the Well 9 project. Again, what this budget amendment does is it adds additional expenditure authority of $239,000 to the Well 9 project. Again, originally, we budgeted a certain amount, and once we received the bids, we realized that the bids came in higher than original amount, and this is being proposed to fully fund the Well 9 project. The second piece is McCormick Park. Again, a very similar story, where we budgeted a certain amount, bids were received, and it came in higher than we originally budgeted, so we are requesting additional expenditure authority. And the part B is a strategy and a goal to address both Tremont and McCormick's needs. And in that second bullet point, we are returning REIT funds which were originally budgeted for the McCormick Park to the REIT fund, and in place of that, in lieu of that, we are funding the remaining balance with bond proceeds. The third project there is the Tremont project. In support of the McCormick project, again, we are reallocating bond proceeds that were originally planned for the Tremont project, and we're going to reallocate those for the McCormick Park project. And in place of those bond proceeds, we are going to propose allocating REIT funds to supplant them. So again, overall, the project amount is not changing. We are returning some funds and reallocating others. The last piece of this budget amendment is housekeeping items. What we are doing there is when we originally budgeted in 2016 for the 2017-18 biennial, there were unknowns about the bonds, as far as the amount of proceeds we received, the debt service payments, what funds those would be accounted for in. So this is a housekeeping item where we are truing up the activities that we are doing with the bond proceeds to the proper funds. And I hope that becomes clear as we kind of move through this short deck. So we want to graphically, again, show what the first item was. Well 9 project. Originally, the budget authority was for $1.6 million. We received bids, and now we are requesting that that total budget authority be increased to $1.839 million, which is a $239,000 increase in expenditure authority. The additional $239,000 would come from our Fund 403, which is our cumulative water reserve fund, to finance and fund the rest of the project. So again, the first column there shows you what the original budget was authorized. The second column is what we are requesting, and the third column there just shows you the delta of the additional expenditure authority. McCormick Park project, again, we've set this up to show the council and the public the same format, so in the first column, we have what was originally budgeted for in the 1718 biennial budget of $955,000. Bids came in higher than expected, so now we are requesting total authority for $1.346 million. This is an increase of $390,000 of additional expenditure authority. Now, this graph I want to just take a second on, because the first two are pretty straightforward and easy to follow. We had original budget authority, and we requested additional expenditure authority. In this graph, we're trying to lay out what the source of funding is under the original budget and the new budget. It's a little tough to see, but there is, I don't know if there's a pointer on this. I'm afraid to push a button. Yes, cool. In this original box here, this is the original budget adopted, and you have the columns here that represent the funding sources. So in the original budget, it was originally authorized for $955,000, and we funded this budget expenditure through REIT funds, impact fee funds of both McCormick Park impact fees and park, and just general park impact fees, and then the RCO grant. And you can see those dollars represented here and also in the table in the graph. With this budget amendment, we are returning the REIT funds, so you see that they go from $286,000 to zero, and we are now allocating a portion of bond proceeds of $677,000 to the project. The other two funding sources remain the same, which total up to the $1.346 million of new project budget authority. The last column just shows you the change that has occurred. Again, you should see in the yellow, originally, we had $286,000, and with the proposal, we have zero, and so you see a negative change, meaning we are returning those funds to the REIT fund. Likewise, we did not have originally bond proceeds planned in the original budget, but now we are moving forward, suggesting that we should allocate bond proceeds, and you'll see that in the $677,000. So moving on to the Tremont project, we, this table is intended to represent the similar relationships. Again, original expenditure authority was, oop, was $18 million, and the different funding sources identified in the different columns and on the left. What's important, again, with the Tremont project change is that we are not changing our overall expenditure authority. The project was originally authorized at $18 million, and we're staying $18 million. What this amendment is proposing is to reallocate amongst the funding sources to meet some different goals for our bond spend downs and provide us some additional flexibility for timing of the construction project. Again, I'm gonna point out that originally, REIT II funds were not anticipated to be pledged for this project, and we had a total of $5.8 million in bond proceeds. Under the proposal, we have now identified $677,000 of REIT funds to be allocated for the project, and we have now taken that $677,000 out of our bond proceeds and have reallocated those to the McCormick project. So the top three numbers on this new proposal of REIT II, bond proceeds for storm, and bond proceeds for street totaled the $5.82 million. So again, we are just reallocating amongst the funding sources to meet some additional goals, and you can see that the totals at the bottom of the original budget is $18 million, and the new budget is $18 million as well. Lastly, I talked about some housekeeping adjustments related to the Tremont project. The easy example is that we had originally budgeted all the bond proceeds to go into a particular fund, Fund 304. Now that we have received the bond proceeds and know a few more facts and information about the costs of issuance and the debt, we are truing up how we are treating those bond proceeds. And so we are now allocating the proper portion of bond proceeds to our storm fund, 421. We are allocating the proper amount of capital expenditures from our storm fund. We are allocating the proper debt service payments out of our storm fund, and any other bond-related transaction is now going to be reflected as actuals and replace what the budget estimates were. So we're really truing up just housekeeping items related to the bond activity related to Tremont. So that's the fourth tier of this budget amendment. So I'm hopeful that that presentation was a little more clear than the ordinance before you and the staff report, because again, these are very accounting-wise driven, bars code-driven, if you will, and it's not exactly clear when you look at the ordinance and the staff report that this is what it's actually achieving.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
To get this on the floor for discussion, I would move to adopt ordinance amending the 2017-18 biennial budgets for the city of Port Orchard as presented.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Can we have a second? Under discussion.
I would just share that we just had a finance committee earlier this evening, and the committee pretty much went through this line by line to make sure that our eyes didn't cross and that we certainly understood where all of the funds were coming and going. And admittedly, it's a bit, bit of a task to try to keep everything straight. It does, as Noah presented, it does work out so that all of the funds are sent to the appropriate classification, if you will, and they're all accounted for. So it does recognize two things, that we are taking advantage of the bond funding now so that we can meet some of the timing requirements of expenditures of the bond fund, and we're picking up some of the overages, depending upon the situation, either out of REIT or some out of the bond funding. So the other thing that I would just add to this, and if this is approved, we're dealing with all of the knowns that we have now, all of the change orders and things of that nature, but there's no contingency, so as these projects move forward, if there are additional things that come forward, we will be back revisiting those issues. So just make sure that everybody understands that.
Thank you.
As I pointed clarification on the contingency, the Tremont project still has contingency-
Thank you, yes.
-capacity. It would be the other projects that have gone to bid, but the projects haven't started, and as we all know, as you open things up, there could be issues known at that time.
Thank you. I missed that part. The Tremont project has a million dollars' worth of contingency, so, but on the park and those sorts of things, if we have something come up, we'll be back revisiting it.
Okay. Councilmember Roosevelt?
I just wanted to commend Noah. That was a great presentation, actually simplified-
... funds which were originally budgeted for the McCormick Park to the REIT fund. And in place of that, in lieu of that, we are funding the remaining balance with bond proceeds. The third project there is the Tremont Project. In support of the McCormick Project, again, we are reallocating bond proceeds that were originally planned for the Tremont Project, and we're going to reallocate those for the McCormick Park Project. And in place of those bond proceeds, we are going to propose allocating REIT funds to supplant them. So again, overall, the project amount is not changing. We are returning some funds and reallocating others. The last piece of this budget amendment is housekeeping items. What we are doing there is when we originally budgeted in 2016 for the 2017-18 biennial, there were unknowns about the bonds as far as the amount of proceeds we received, the debt service payments, what funds those would be accounted for in. So this is a housekeeping item where we are truing up the activities that we are doing with the bond proceeds to the proper funds. And I hope that becomes clear as we kind of move through this short deck. So we want to graphically again show what the first item was. Well 9 Project. Originally, the budget authority was for $1.6 million. We received bids, and now we are requesting that that total budget authority be increased to $1.839 million, which is a $239,000 increase in expenditure authority. The additional $239,000 would come from our Fund 403, which is our cumulative water reserve fund, to finance and fund the rest of the project. So again, the first column there shows you what the original budget was authorized. The second column is what we are requesting, and the third column there just shows you the delta of the additional expenditure authority. McCormick Park Project, again, we've set this up to show the council and the public the same format. So in the first column, we have what was originally budgeted for in the 17-18 biennial budget of $955,000. Bids came in higher than expected, so now we are requesting total authority for $1.346 million. This is an increase of $390,000 of additional expenditure authority. Now, this graph I want to just take a second on because the first two are pretty straightforward and easy to follow. We had original budget authority, and we requested additional expenditure authority. In this graph, we're trying to lay out what the source of funding is under the original budget and the new budget. It's a little tough to see, but there is, I don't know if there's a pointer on this. I'm afraid to push a button. Yes, cool. In this original box here, this is the original budget adopted. And you have the columns here that represent the funding sources. So in the original budget, it was originally authorized for $955,000, and we funded this budget expenditure through REIT funds, impact fee funds of both McCormick Park impact fees and park and just general park impact fees, and then the RCO grant. And you can see those dollars represented here and also in the table in the graph. With this budget amendment, we are returning the REIT funds. So you see that they go from $286,000 to zero, and we are now allocating a portion of bond proceeds of $677,000 to the project. The other two funding sources remain the same, which total up to the $1.346 million of new project budget authority. The last column just shows you the change that has occurred. Again, you should see in the yellow, originally, we had $286,000, and with the proposal, we have zero, and so you see a negative change, meaning we are returning those funds to the REIT fund. Likewise, we did not have originally bond proceeds planned in the original budget, but now we are moving forward suggesting that we should allocate bond proceeds, and you'll see that in the $677,000. So moving on to the Tremont Project, this table is intended to represent the similar relationships. Again, original expenditure authority was, oop, was $18 million, and the different funding sources identified in the different columns and on the left. What's important, again, with the Tremont Project change is that we are not changing our overall expenditure authority. The project was originally authorized at $18 million, and we're staying $18 million. What this amendment is proposing is to reallocate amongst the funding sources to meet some different goals for our bond spend downs and provide us some additional flexibility for timing of the construction project. Again, I'm going to point out that originally, REIT II funds were not anticipated to be pledged for this project, and we had a total of $5.8 million in bond proceeds. Under the proposal, we have now identified $677,000 of REIT funds to be allocated for the project, and we have now taken that $677,000 out of our bond proceeds and have reallocated those to the McCormick Project. So the top three numbers on this new proposal of REIT II, bond proceeds for Storm and bond proceeds for Street totaled the $5.82 million. So again, we are just reallocating amongst the funding sources to meet some additional goals. And you can see that the totals at the bottom of the original budget is $18 million, and the new budget is $18 million as well. Lastly, I talked about some housekeeping adjustments related to the Tremont Project. The easy example is that we had originally budgeted all the bond proceeds to go into a particular fund, Fund 304. Now that we have received the bond proceeds and know a few more facts and information about the costs of issuance and the debt, we are truing up how we are treating those bond proceeds. And so we are now allocating the proper portion of bond proceeds to our Storm Fund, 421. We are allocating the proper amount of capital expenditures from our Storm Fund. We are allocating the proper debt service payments out of our Storm Fund, and any other bond-related transaction is now going to be reflected as actuals and replace what the budget estimates were. So we're really truing up just housekeeping items related to the bond activity related to Tremont. So that's the fourth tier of this budget amendment. So I'm hopeful that that presentation was a little more clear than the ordinance before you and the staff report because, again, these are very accounting-wise driven, bars code-driven, if you will, and it's not exactly clear when you look at the ordinance and the staff report that this is what it's actually achieving.
Mayor?
Yes?
To get this on the floor for discussion, I would move to adopt ordinance amending the 2017-18 biennial budgets for the City of Port Orchard as presented.
Do we have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Can we have a second? Under discussion.
I would just share that we just had a finance committee earlier this evening, and the committee pretty much went through this line by line to make sure that our eyes didn't cross and that we certainly understood where all of the funds were coming and going. And admittedly, it's a bit of a task to try to keep everything straight. It does, as Noah presented, it does work out so that all of the funds are sent to the appropriate classification, if you will, and they're all accounted for. So it does recognize two things, that we are taking advantage of the bond funding now so that we can meet some of the timing requirements of expenditures of the bond fund, and we're picking up some of the overages depending upon the situation, either out of REIT or some out of the bond funding. So the other thing that I would just add to this, and if this is approved, we're dealing with all of the knowns that we have now, all of the change orders and things of that nature, but there's no contingency. So as these projects move forward, if there are additional things that come forward, we will be back revisiting those issues. So just make sure that everybody understands that.
Thank you.
As I point a clarification on the contingency, the Tremont Project still has contingency capacity.
Thank you, yes.
It would be the other projects that have gone to bid, but the projects haven't started. And as we all know, as you open things up, there could be issues known at that time.
Thank you. I missed that part. The Tremont Project has a million dollars' worth of contingency, but on the park and those sorts of things, if we have something come up, we'll be back revisiting it.
Okay. Councilmember Roosevelt?
I just wanted to commend Noah. That was a great presentation and actually simplified what you all went through. So thank you. That was very helpful.
I see in notes under the header that the public has an opportunity to comment on the amendment following its presentation. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak to the amendment before us tonight? Okay, I see none. Is there any further discussion?
No, I apologize for not mentioning this earlier, but on this piece of paper, on 1B and on 2B, we're adding $390,581 to the Capital Construction Fund, and that represents the McCormick Woods Park. Is that correct?
Yeah, so the $390,581 represents the net impact on revenues to the Fund 302. So that takes in consideration us returning $286,750 of REIT funds and then allocating the $677,331. So that's the net impact of us returning funds to the REIT fund and then allocating the bond proceeds.
Okay, I was trying to take it back to your staff report, and it said that the contract award for McCormick Woods was $365,581 more than the budgeted amount. I was trying to put those two numbers together, but they don't go together. They just look like they should.
They look like they should, and that's a great question, and so I can speak to that. Originally, we had budgeted $955,000 for the biennial period. Year-to-date, there was an expenses of $25,000, so the total budget capacity available, a portion of that was utilized already. So we are recapturing that so we could fully fund the project going forward, and that's why the two don't exactly match.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion?
I'd also like to thank Noah for patiently explaining some questions, and my understanding is that basically the funds are being swapped. I know that's not the right word. Probably reallocations better, but the amounts themselves are still the same as what was originally intended to be spent. It's just that the sources are different based on their deadlines and when things have to be paid.
Yes, that's a correct summary. Yes, we are trading the funds.
Well, thank you for helping me understand.
Yep.
I'd just like to thank you as well. I appreciate your efforts to exploring different graphing opportunities to try and convey this information as easily as you can to people who don't work with this kind of stuff regularly. Thank you. Is there any further discussion? With that, we will be taking a vote on the adoption of an ordinance amending the 2017-2018 biennial budget. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 7B is an ordinance adopting, or sorry, an ordinance to establish electrical charging stations. Mr. Cawker.
Great, thank you, Mayor Fortem and council. Again, this topic we brought forward in previous study sessions, but here we are bringing the full ordinance now. So to give you some background and history to this, the city installed two Level 2 charging stations in 2011. The total project's costs were approximately $21,000. Of this, the city contributed $10,600, and Ecotality paid approximately $10,900 towards the project. The city entered into a service agreement with Ecotality, which was later purchased by Blink. The service agreement with Blink and the city has since expired. The city does, in fact, own the equipment and stations down there, which are out of order and in need of repair or replacement. There is a minimal upfront cost to purchasing new stations and having them installed. There are additional costs if the city desires to try and recoup revenue from the electric vehicle charging stations. The city's staff brought forth two options for consideration to the finance committee. The city evaluated the revenue potential and costs and found it to not be cost-effective to charge fees at these stations due to the ongoing administration and collection costs. The finance committee reviewed the merits and costs of the two alternatives for these stations. The finance committee recommended the following ordinance be brought forth to the full council for adoption. The finance committee recommended replacing the charging stations and providing these stations at no cost to the users for recharging their vehicles. The city finds that it is in the best interest of the citizens of Port Orchard to encourage the use of electric vehicles to reduce emissions and provide cleaner air, to promote tourism at shopping locations where the stations are located, and to follow the example of the state. The finance committee recommended that the following ordinance be brought forth. And I wanted to, for the record, I wanted to read in the ordinance, if that's okay. Whereas the City of Port Orchard adopted its 2017-2018, oh, excuse me, wrong ordinance. Here we go. Whereas it is in the interest and to the benefit of the people of the City of Port Orchard to encourage the use of electric vehicles to reduce emissions and provide the public with cleaner air. And whereas the city desires to promote tourism and support making electric vehicle charging stations available as an opportunity to encourage shopping within the city. And whereas it is in the interest of the general public to have available at no cost electric vehicle charging stations available for their use on city-owned property. And whereas the city has evaluated the potential revenue of the use of city-owned electric vehicle charging stations and finds it to not be cost-effective to collect a usage fee at these stations due to the associated collection and administration costs. And whereas the mayor or their designee may report to the city council as deemed necessary by the mayor on the estimated amount of city-purchased electricity consumed by plug-in electric vehicles if the director of the Public Works determines that the use has significant costs to the city. And whereas RCW 40301250 authorizes the state to purchase power at state expense to recharge privately and publicly-owned plug-in electric vehicles at state locations where the vehicles are to be used for business, commute, are commute vehicles, or where vehicles are the state location for the purposes of conducting business. And whereas the city wishes to follow the example of the state with regard to providing this benefit to city employees and the general public for the reasons set forth above. Now, I'd like to turn this discussion back over to the finance committee and council.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I would make a motion.
Do we have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Would you like to speak to the motion?
Just that at, we have two charging stations downtown now that are inoperable, and so it would be good to replace them. When we looked, the cost of the charging stations has diminished significantly from when they were originally put in, so it's our assumption that we can install both of these for under $4,000. And the administration of collecting the fees would, it would just be an administrative difficulty and cost to us. So that's why the finance committee was supportive of replacing the charging stations and then not charging the public to use them.
Yes?
Do we have any idea what it costs to run them on an annual basis?
To run them or...
What it costs in electricity for the city?
Yeah, so you're about 10 to 11 cents per kilowatt of power.
And how many, do we have an average of the use?
For those stations, well, those stations have been out of use for, well, I don't know how long, but more than a year. So we do not have a history on usage of those stations. Last, we had data on that. See if I have it here. It was in 2013. So again, not a whole lot of data since 2013 that we could actually speak tonight on usage. Now, part of what we'll be gathering is some information on usage as part of this re, kind of actually getting the stations up and operational again.
Yes, John.
I would have, and I don't remember the exact numbers, we have four charging stations that are office in downtown Bermerton, and we have a charging unit at each one of our operating facilities, or I should say the Bermerton and Paulsville operating facilities. When we looked at the cost of the power, it was negligible. It was, you know, you're talking maybe a couple hundred dollars a year. It's not, and our, I know that the four stations that we have in Arborside are used every day, so they're well-used. I personally think that, you know, electric vehicles are kind of the way of the future. In fact, we just took delivery of our first fully-electric bus. But more and more cars are converting to plug-in hybrids and total electric vehicles. And when you look at it in its entirety, we're going to have two parking spaces devoted out of, what do we have downtown? Couple hundred parking spaces. So I think the need is going to be growing rather rapidly, and I think two right now is probably a good start. I would hope that we could look to the future and put more in. We certainly do. With transit, when we build our new parking rides, have charging stations, and we're actually going back and retrofitting some of our other parking rides, like out at Harper Church by Southworth and one up at Kingston. We're putting in charging units, and they're getting utilized more and more. And for total transparency, I have, one of my cars is a plug-in hybrid, although in the last five years, I think I've used the ones downtown twice. I just don't have, that's not in my normal course of travels, so I'll make sure that everybody's clear.
Any further discussion?
I do have a question for the Public Works Director. If he has any idea what would be considered a significant use of electricity, like maybe over a thousand a year, or have you thought about, I mean, do you, I'm assuming that you're looking at our utility bills and you would have a breakout, so you would be able to tell the usage for the two charging units?
Well, I guess the answer, I would have to follow what Councilman Clausen said, is when I review the Puget Sound Energy Bills, we're, the bills that we get for our city facilities, our pump stations, the city pays for street lighting for every street light, those bills are, and, you know, I don't know, those are, there's a lot of money that we're paying for that power. This, this isn't even going to move the meter. If I were to have any concern about doing what we're doing, it's going to be, we're going to spend more money on public works, maintenance man-hours maintaining those, and that's just going to be a cost of doing business for providing these. The electricity is, it's a non-issue. It's not even going to register on any PSE account. I mean, and the other thing, too, is you've got to remember that meter that provides for that is serving the marquee lighting. So if, when we review the marquee lighting, it's not going up. You know, it's diminutive, so.
So it's considered the minimus? Okay. I mean, I would like it if we knew what it was costing, but doesn't sound like...
The only thing that we could do would be to track, like, over a year. We could look at our averages for the marquee lighting. Again, we pay for all the lighting for the lights that we put out for Christmas. Again, when you look at what the city pays for power-wise, again, we're going to spend a lot, a lot more money on man-hours maintaining this facility than we will paying for power.
It may take longer to see trends just because of usage. Is it going to be used four times a day or six times a day? So your one year probably wouldn't supply real valid data, but it would be a starting point.
Councilman Clausen?
I think the other thing that you need to think about, too, is what's the other side of the cost? The cost of tracking who's using it, billing it, trying to collect it. You're going to spend more money in postage than I think it's really going to cost you.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Any further discussion? Seeing none or hearing none. We will be voting on an ordinance to establish electrical charging stations within the City of Port Orchard. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to item C, which is adoption of an ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapter 7.04.021, nuisance feeding prohibition and establishing an effective date. Mr. Dorsey?
Thank you, Mayor Fortem, Deaner, and City Council. On October 17th, 2017, at the direction of the Land Use Committee, the Port Orchard City Council discussed but did not take action on a proposal to establish a nuisance feeding prohibition of birds on public property. On April 10th, 2018, upon further discussion and consideration, staff was directed to move forward with an amendment to the Port Orchard Municipal Code and to provide the needed signage to establish a nuisance feeding prohibition of birds on public property. Staff recommends adoption of an ordinance thereby updating Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapter 7.04.021, thereby establishing a nuisance feeding prohibition of birds on public property. And I would like to note that the city basically had, if you look at the red line, you know, we had a fairly robust ordinance already in place that had to do with, you know, what, that there was already a prohibition of feeding of animals and that the infraction system was already in place. It was simply a matter of striking the exception for the birds. So from a code amendment standpoint, I really appreciate this assignment because I didn't have to do much.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Mr. Clausen? Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance thereby updating POMC, Chapter 7.04.021, thereby establishing a nuisance feeding prohibition of birds on public properties with final form approved by the city attorney.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second? Any discussion?
I have mixed feelings about this. I certainly understand the desire of people to not have the remnants of a seagull's lunch on their hair, but I think it sends a conflicting image when we have a festival celebrating seagulls. So I'm just going to vote no. I don't know that we need additional enforcement for something like this.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes, I would just point out that it's, it's a bit more than a nuisance with the, when seagull droppings land on your car and your car is sitting out in the sun for, you know, eight hours, it does have an impact on the paint job of the vehicles. And this is not terribly uncommon. I know that the City of Bermerton has a similar type ordinance along the boardwalk in Bermerton. And, you know, again, it's responding to the community who expressed their concern.
And I think it gels the message that we just shouldn't be feeding animals of the wild in general.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. We are going to be voting on an ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapter 7.04.021, nuisance feeding prohibition and establishing an effective date. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Item 7D, adoption of a resolution adopting the final plat of Andazio Village and termination of development agreement, known as DA-001-14. Mr. Bond?
Thank you. The preliminary plat, known as Andazio Village, was granted approval with conditions by the Kitsap County Hearing Examiner on January 30th, 2007. A SEPA MDNS was issued on October 9th, 2006. The City of Port Orchard annexed the property, known as Andazio Village, on April 12, 2012, recognizing previous approvals of Kitsap County. The City of Port Orchard reviewed and approved a minor plat amendment to Andazio Village on March 25th, 2015, after issuing an addendum to the previous SEPA determination on December 31st, 2014. The City of Port Orchard and the property owner entered into a development agreement, DA-001-14, modifying some previous Kitsap County Hearing Examiner decision conditions of approval and requiring certain off-site improvements on April 9th, 2015. The Andazio Village subdivision creates 64 single-family residential lots and three tracks. The applicant has installed or bonded for roadway illumination, roads, sidewalks, landscaping, water and sewer, and storm drainage improvements, and has satisfied the preliminary plat conditions of approval and the conditions of the development agreement. Streets within this plat are for public use and will be accepted into the streets, are the city's road system. Staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution granting approval of the final plat of Andazio Village and termination of development agreement, 001-14.
Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt a resolution as presented, granting a final plat approval for Andazio Village and termination of development agreement, DA-001-14.
Do we have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Any questions for Nick?
Hearing none. We will be voting on the adoption of a resolution adopting the final plat of Andazio Village and termination of development agreement, DA-001-...
and termination of development agreement DA-001-14. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Business item 7E, adoption of a resolution approving a contract with Neptune Marine LLC for the Bay Street Pedestrian Pathway Segment Number Three Construction and Documenting Procurement Procedures. Mr. Dorsey?
Thank you. On March 30th, 2018, and April 6th, 2018, the city's Public Works Department advertised in the Port Orchard Independent, the city's webpage, and the Daily Journal of Commerce, and uploaded the bid documents to the Washington's Builders Exchange. By the April 16th, 2018 bid due date at 2:00 PM, the city received and opened eight sealed bids for the 2018 Bay Street Pedestrian Pathway Segment Three Construction Project as follows. And those all have applicable tax. In general summary, the sealed bids received ranged from the apparent low of $375,947.57 to the apparent high of $549,812.90, with the engineer's estimate at $400,000. Following the completion of the mandatory bidder responsibility checklist and upon concurrence with the Washington State Department of Transportation, Highway, and Local Programs, it was determined that Neptune Marine LLC provided the lowest responsive and qualified bid proposal of $375,947.57 for the 2018 Bay Street Pedestrian Pathway Segment Three Construction. And I'd like to point out under fiscal impacts that this project did have $530,000. That was in the budget. Fifty thousand of that was from city funds and 390 came from the Connecting Washington's Fund. And so with the $530,000 is covering both the construction at $376,000 and the construction administration. Because even though this is not federal funds, it is Connecting Washington Funds being managed by the Department of Transportation. And they, they tend to like to manage everything the same way. It's the federal way. So we were actually, went through an interview selection process. This still has Buy America, because the state requires that. It'll still have, you know, prevailing wage documentation. So the, we have 496 basically of the 530 allocated to construction and construction administration. So there's about $34,000 in cushion at this point. And so I feel very comfortable with where we're at on this project moving forward. So therefore, staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution thereby approving a contract with Neptune Marine LLC in an amount not to exceed $375,947.57, applicable taxes included, for the 2018 Bay Street Pedestrian Pathway Segment Three Construction Project.
Do we have a motion?
Yes, I move to adopt a resolution thereby approving a contract with Neptune Marine LLC in an amount not to exceed $375,947.57, applicable taxes included, for the 2018 Bay Street Pedestrian Pathway Segment Number Three Construction Project.
Second.
Motion and a second, further discussion?
I just have a brief reminder that I do work for the State Department of Transportation, and I do not work for the Highways and Local Programs Department, which was instrumental in looking over these two. I do not feel there's a conflict, but if anyone feels there is, I'll be happy to recuse myself.
No conflict noted.
I would just, I just want to make the comment that I was pleased that the contractor for this will be the same one doing the McCormick Woods. And so they will be here, and they're obviously committed. I was also pleased to see that other contractors that we've worked with in the past, such as Active Construction and Sound Excavation Bid.
And we've worked with Neptune Marine twice before, so, you know, I have no reservations moving forward at this point.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. We are going to be voting on the adoption of a resolution approving a contract with Neptune Marine LLC for the Bay Street Pedestrian Pathway Segment Number Three Construction and Documenting Procurement Procedures. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're on to item 7F, which is the approval of a change order number one to contract number 37-17 with Active Construction Incorporated for the Tremont Street Widening Project.
Thank you. On June 27th, 2017, the Port Orchard City Council approved contract 037-17 with Active Construction for the Tremont Street Widening Project. During recent construction phase activities, it was determined that the existing 16-inch diameter sanitary sewer force main located within Tremont Street near the south Kitsap Boulevard intersection does not currently have adequate cover over the pipe and that the situation would be further exacerbated by the proposed lowering, or will be further exacerbated by the proposed lowering of the road in that location as the needed force main replacement work is scheduled for April 30th in order to maintain the overall project schedule. But the change order approval process between the contractor, the city's CACM team, and the Department of Transportation, Highway, and Local Programs will not incur in time for the regular meeting and cannot wait for this regular meeting, cannot wait for the May 8th regular meeting. The city's Public Works Department is requesting authorization for the Mayor Protem to execute change order one with active construction in an amount not to exceed $175,000 at this time. But the actual change order approval process is, or once it's complete, a corrected change order will be brought to the council. At this point, I'd like to discuss fiscal impacts. When we, this is the story of, you know, in construction, a week can make all the difference. So last week, we had the, this estimate that was from our CACM team with oversight with the contractor. Last night at 10:30 in bed, I received an email from the contractor with a revised amount of their actual bid of $243,000. So at this point, because we still have the issue of needing to get this work done starting April 30th, which is Monday, and we discussed this at the work study last week, we really do need to proceed the way we were proceeding earlier. We just, I'm just requesting that we change the motion from $175,000 to $250,000, reminding council that we have the million, this is the change order one to the project. And so this is the first dip into the actual change order authority into the contingency fund. We're just raising that level. I would like to put, let you know that we, we aren't just accepting the proposal at this point. We're going to go as part of our change order approval process. We're required to go through those numbers, question the contractor. And so my hope is that it's actually going to be something less than 250 or the 243. And at the same time, we'll manage this on force count, which is a construction technique, which is, in the construction world, is basically attributed to time and materials. We're going to be tracking that work on force count. And so I think this is, you know, in keeping this project moving forward, this is the best option. So at this point, staff recommends approval of change order one with active construction in the amount not to exceed $250,000 with a corrected change order number one to be brought back to council for final ratification.
Mr. Clausen?
Mayor, I move to approve change order number one with Active Construction Inc. in an amount not to exceed $250,000 with a corrected change order number one to be brought back to the council for final ratification.
Do we have a motion? Is there a second? Second, okay.
Further discussion? I wanted just to make sure everybody picked up, and Sean mentioned it earlier, we're talking about the budget amendment. Fortunately, this project does have a contingency. So that's pretty much what the contingency is there for. So we'll cover this change order.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none. We are going to be voting on the approval of change order number one to contract number 37-17 with Active Construction Incorporated for the Tremont Street Widening Project. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And we're on to item 7G, which is approval of a contract with PSE for master lighting services. Mr. Dorsey?
Thank you. On April 2nd, 2018, Puget Sound Energy's contract management and legal team provided the city of Port Orchard a draft of the Master Lighting Services Agreement Number 23 to more specifically detail the obligations of each party as it relates to lighting services within the city. The agreement was reviewed by the Public Works Department and the city attorney and determined to be necessary. Please note, this agreement does not modify or amend the current PSE franchise agreement, which is ordinance 02816, or the work being done currently by staff to clarify bonding uniformity amongst all franchises and/or utility operators within the city of Port Orchard right-of-way. This is basically a separate agreement just with PSE, what used to be PSE Intu Light. Staff recommends that the city council authorize the mayor to execute contract number C03618, thereby approving Master Lighting Services Agreement Number 23 with Puget Sound Energy.
Mr. Chain?
I move to authorize the mayor to execute a contract thereby approving Master Lighting Services Agreement Number 23 with Puget Sound Energy.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second, further discussion? Mr. Clausen?
Clarification, this is the agreement with PSE that they provide the streetlights through the city and we compensate them for that. So essentially, all the streetlights that we have in town are under this agreement.
And it's not just lights that we add typically. It's also in private development when they add streetlights. Those lights like at Endazio or at McCormick, those lights ultimately, once they're installed by the developer, they, they, they're owned and maintained by Puget Sound Energy, but, you know, we pay for the power. And so this agreement just really further, just updates previous agreements so that we have a master agreement in place.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. We are going to be voting on the approval of a contract with Puget Sound Energy for master lighting services. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're on to item 7H, which is approval of a change order number four to contract number 21-17 with Transpo Group USA Incorporated for the 2017-2018 Anderson Hill and Old Clifton Road Roundabout 100% PSNE. Mr. Dorsey?
Thank you. On February 28th, 2017, the Port Orchard City Council approved contract 021-17 for the 2017 100% PSNE Anderson Hill Road Southwest/Southwest/Old Clifton Road Roundabout Project in amount not to exceed $49,400. On June 27th, 2017, change order number one for $5,750 was approved by council for needed right-of-way acquisitions, which was staking of clearing limits and an arborist reviewing the remaining tree stand and location-specific storm drainage-related geotechnical analysis. On October 17th, 2017, change order number two for $5,740 was approved by city council for a cultural resource assessment as needed for a TIB Transportation Improvement Board grant funding application. Change order number three, approved by the Public Works Director, provided for a time-only extension. So this is change order number four, proposed change order number four. Upon direction from the city, we requested an additional $5,500 to provide additional right-of-way acquisition support being the rewriting of legal descriptions and exhibits and coordination with the city's wetland consultant as needed. Staff recommends approval of change order number four to contract 021-17 with the Transpo Group USA Incorporated in amount not to exceed $5,500, bringing the new contract total to $66,390. And we originally budgeted $50,000 for this in 2017. And so a budget amendment at some point will be needed.
Thank you. Ms. Cliff Riley?
I move to approve change order number four to contract number C021-17 with the Transpo Group USA Inc. in the amount not to exceed $5,500, bringing the new contract total to $66,390.
Do we have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion?
Just, when do we anticipate going to construction on this?
We anticipate applying for TIB funds August of 2018, which would, if we're successful, would allow us to obligate funds in 2019. So our hope is to start construction a year from now, May of 2019. That's assuming that our, I think you recall, we entered into an IRA with Kitsap County to manage the right-of-way acquisitions. We've met with both property owners, and that's what that exhibit on the board is showing. It's the proposed right-of-way takes from the Ridge Homeowners Association in the Northwest and then McCormick Communities in the Northeast. So barring no issues there, finishing up our cultural resources in time for the August application, because we have to have all that done. We certainly will be applying.
Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. We'll be voting on the approval of change order number four to contract number 27-17 with Transpo Group USA Incorporated for the 2017-2018 Anderson Hill and Old Clifton Road Roundabout 100% PSNE. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're on to business item 7I, which is the adoption of an interim ordinance on self-storage facilities and self-storage overlay mapping. Mr. Bond?
Thank you. The city has recently experienced an increase in the number of property owners and developers asking about building new indoor and outdoor self-storage facilities in Port Orchard. Some of this interest may be due to a recent moratorium on new, new indoor self-storage units in the city of Pauls Bow and a partial building moratorium on Bainbridge Island, which is causing self-storage units, or self-storage developers to look more closely at Port Orchard in the south Kitsap area for potential locations. Self-storage facilities are currently allowed as a conditional use in the R-12, R-20 commercial zones and as a permitted use in the employment, industrial, and office zone. In the R-12 and R-20 zone, the self-storage facility must be accessory to a multifamily development of at least 12 units. And the gross floor area of the self-storage unit cannot exceed the gross floor area of multifamily dwellings. The Department of Community Development staff are working on an update to the city zoning code, which will propose revisions to the existing zoning designations, the addition of new zoning designations, and changes to the allowable land uses within each zone. The updated zoning code, which will be completed in the second half of 2018, is likely to include additional conditions regarding allowable locations and design standards for self-storage facilities. The city is concerned that new self-storage facilities could be built in areas of the city that would have the potential to disrupt the creation of new neighborhoods and local centers. In addition, the city is concerned that storage facilities, while serving the needs of city residents, generate relatively little revenue to the city compared to other commercial land uses and commercial, and consume large tracts of commercially zoned land. Self-storage facilities are highly lucrative business ventures that, once constructed, are rarely ever converted into other uses or redeveloped. As such, the city council wishes to recommend that self-storage uses, wishes to limit self-storage uses to only a few areas of the city where the council is confident that the construction of the self-storage units would not be disruptive to planning efforts to create local centers and great neighborhoods. The city council wishes to have interim controls established that will more closely regulate self-storage facilities while the zoning code update is being prepared. By limiting the areas in which new facilities can be located, the purpose of this limitation is to prevent new self-storage development that may be inconsistent with the updated zoning code or with the city's goals and policies in the comprehensive plan and with the council's vision for Port Orchard's future development, including its designated commercial gateways and centers. The interim ordinance would adopt a self-storage overlay map that designates limited areas in which the new self-storage facilities can be developed for a period of 12 months. Corresponding changes to the land use table in Port Orchard Municipal Code, Section 20.46.030, would distinguish between indoor and outdoor storage, with the latter being restricted to the employment, industrial, and office zone for the duration of the interim ordinance. The ordinance also amends provisions related to self-storage as an accessory use to residential, to residential uses, only allowing self-storage as an accessory use to larger residential pro, to, excuse me. The ordinance also amends provisions related to self-storage as an accessory use to residential uses, only allowing self-storage as an accessory use to larger residential projects, and by limiting the size of self-storage facilities as an accessory use. Adoption of the ordinance would allow city staff adequate time to complete Adoption of the ordinance would allow city staff adequate time to complete the zoning code update, with revised permanent regulations for the location and design of self-storage facilities. Unlike a moratorium, the interim ordinance would not prevent all development of self-storage facilities, but it would limit their development into areas of the city where the city believes that their continued operation would be compatible with the city's long-range plans. Staff recommends that the city council approve the interim ordinance and the interim self-storage overlay map. In addition, the suggested motion that has been provided, because we're declaring an emergency, I would recommend that you add the language to your motion to declare an emergency, which means that this is going to have immediate effect versus taking effect after publication.
Mr. Kretschert?
I move to declare an emergency and to approve an interim ordinance on self-storage uses and an interim self-storage overlay map.
Second?
Motion and a second. Further discussion?
I just appreciate the timeliness with which the community development department was able to put together the overlay map and the ordinance, because it is an issue that I believe needs attention. I believe storage units are important, but I also believe that we need to protect our commercial areas, and we have hopes to do some sub-area planning quite soon, so I'm supportive of this interim ordinance.
Yes.
Just a quick question, Nick. So we have the, we have it listed as twelve months, could it be less than twelve months if planning was completed?
Yeah, and the reason we did twelve months is that you have to come back and extend this every time you need more time, and you have to then have a public hearing on that extension. Right now, we've assembled a public participation plan on our zoning code update, and we're going to be bringing that to you next meeting, and it has a completion date of October. However, that's also at the same time that we're trying to adopt the budget, and so depending on work-study availability, I just didn't want to, to put us in the position of having to do an extension, hold an additional hearing, and all the procedural steps that go along with it. I think realistically, we're in the six to eight-month range to complete that project, but I hate to have to come back and ask for more time.
Understandable. Thank you.
I'd just like to commend staff for their diligence and seeing an emerging trend or pattern that needed to be addressed and addressed somewhat quickly. Thank you. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, we will be voting on an interim ordinance on self-storage facilities and self-storage overlay map. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the ordinance passes. I see that we got minutes, but I don't believe that they were included on our business items, so I guess those will have to sleep.
They're in the consent agenda?
Consent agenda, okay. Thank you. Reports of council committees, beginning with finance?
Yes, we had a finance committee, as I mentioned earlier, this evening at five, and as part of our regular agenda, we reviewed the sales tax receipts and the REIT receipts. Sales tax continues to come in a little better than anticipated. I think year-to-date, we're at about seven point seven percent over what we had anticipated, which is good news. And in the two REIT funds, they too have been coming in better than anticipated. I don't have a percentage, but I think it was like forty thousand, did you say? Approximately forty thousand better than what we had anticipated, so it was all good news. We went through the various minimum reserve levels in our different funding, and they are all holding strong. If you have any questions about any of them, I'm sure Noah would be happy to share them with you, as he did the committee. In fact, I would hope that we could just send it out as part of the, for the whole council to have copies of it. We talked quite a bit about the Tremont Widening Project. You heard a lot of it here at the DIAS tonight, what was going on with it and the change orders, and we also went through the spreadsheet we have that kind of shows where we are in relationship to anticipated expenditures and where we actually have been spending money. So we're, we're doing well. We're under what we thought we were, but we're also about to get into some of the more expensive components of that project, so we'll fast-consume the amounts that we're under and what our anticipations were. We went through the budget amendment ordinance, as I mentioned, and went through that pretty much in detail. We talked about the charging stations and supported that. We talked a bit about the Public Works fiber optics and got a bit of an update on that. And that was about the extent. We did talk briefly about the retreat and retreat items, and from the finance committee's perspective, what we would like to talk about at the retreat, if time allows, one of which is we've asked Mr. Grocker to come with some information regarding our minimum reserve levels and where we are and where we should be as we move forward, and is there anything that we can tie changes to those reserve levels to, so that we can always stay ahead of the game of having adequate reserves? So that was pretty much the committee.
Thank you. Economic Development and Tourism?
Yes, we will be meeting on May fourteenth, which is the second Monday of May, here in council chambers at nine-thirty.
Utilities?
Yes, we met April sixteenth, and we discussed a number of different projects. One of the most important, I believe, is the agreement, the franchise agreement between the West Sound Utility District and the city of Port Orchard. There has been some disagreement about that project, about the need for a franchise agreement on behalf of West Sound Utility District. Because of our history, they don't believe that they need to have this agreement, and they view themselves as a municipality, so there is a definition problem, and I believe, long story short, is that we are looking to MRSC for an interpretation on this, and will be agreeing to disagree, but will be agreeing with the MRSC finding.
I, I just have a quick question. Are you taping those meetings now?
Yes, we are. Yes, we are. Right. So that's probably not completely, yes, right. We hope to have an agreement soon. We talked about the Foster Pilot Project participation, and kudos to Thomas Hunter for applying for that, and that, that Port Orchard will be participating in that. Pretty interesting. It's a brand-new venture, so there's lots of unknowns, but Thomas is very capable of moving forward to that. We talked about a lot of updates that have already been presented to the council. Well number nine, update, the McCormick Pump Stations Agreement, which again, we have all been updated. And well thirteen, update, going to design, and I believe that project should be done, or we're anticipating that project, in twenty-twenty. Isn't that seen right, June of twenty-twenty? Is that what we're talking about? Right. So our next meeting will be May twenty-first, here at City Hall at nine-thirty a.m.
All right. And sewer advisory?
I was going after lodging tax. Sewer advisory, most of the meeting was spent on hearing the Capitol Projects Update, which we've been hearing about. Nothing real new with that. Discovering, discussing the achievements, the two thousand seventeen achievements report, which was extensive, and discussing the year-end budget status. That next meeting is July eighteenth at six-thirty.
Okay. Land use will be meeting May seventh at DCD at nine-thirty. It says seven-thirty, but I believe that's a nine-thirty meeting time.
Nine-thirty.
At DCD, which makes me also question the economic development and tourism time. I thought we were meeting at nine-thirty on Mondays.
We are.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't notice that that said nine o'clock, but we are meeting at nine-thirty.
Okay. So economic development and tourism and land use are both nine-thirty times. Festival of Chimes and Lights, anything?
It's just continuing to plan for this next festival on December first. We have a theme, Oh Christmas Tree. We're talking about the Christmas tree decorating contest, and the marketing is something that's been set up with staff, so we're just moving forward incrementally. The next meeting is May twenty-first at three-thirty here at City Hall.
Okay. I jumped over lodging tax in there.
Yeah, there's nothing on lodging tax right now.
Okay. Then the item, last item is the council retreat of May eighteenth. Publics welcome to attend, of course. That'll be at Puerto Vallarta, beginning at nine o'clock in the morning. Any outside agency committee reports?
I would, I want to say two things. The first one is, last week, we had the Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council's Transportation Policy Board, and that's a mouthful, had our meeting, and we received presentations on the, for the competition for the county-wide federal funding, and Mark did a nice job of presenting our project, and so I wanted to compliment Mark on that, and that process is moving forward. But the other thing I wanted to mention is I read in the paper over the weekend that the Bainbridge Island City Council voted not to continue with their bridge over Highway three oh five. And what Bainbridge Island does is, whether they want the bridge or not, is, you know, up to them. However, that particular project received regional funding in our last competition, and if they do not accept that money, if they do not complete this project, that two million dollars will go back to the regional pot. It will not, and this is not good for Kitsap County. I want you to know that every time we go, every two years when we go into this competition, those of us that sit on the PSRC's Transportation Policy Board, we work very hard to keep our Kits, but it's called the Kitsap County Set Aside, and that gives us a couple million dollars extra each biennium, or actually, every year, it's about four million dollars to us for the biennium, and then we get six regional asks, slots for the regional competition, and we typically only are awarded one, and so Bainbridge Island received that last time, and if they're not going to use that money, it's difficult for Kitsap to continue to argue how important it is for us to receive those, those monies. So it's not a good thing for our region, that Bainbridge, they are asking PSRC if they can redesign it and still get the money. I'm not sure that's going to work. You typically do not get to say, oh, oops, I don't want to put in a bridge, I want to put in a signal. You know, that's not typically something that PSRC would be excited to support. So we will find out more on that. Again, if anyone thinks that money's coming back to Kitsap, it, it won't.
Okay. Thank you. Any other outside committee reports? Hearing none. I have nothing to report for Rob. Department heads, Mr. Dorson?
Yes, thank you, and I, and I want to, you know, add to what Councilwoman Ashby was saying, is our, we have six slots, but in the ten years that I've been going through this process, our highest-scoring project in the regional, because of the, the framework in which the questions are established, the, the goals and policies, emissions, were, I think the highest, so if the funding line is at six, the top six projects are funded, we've always, the highest we've ever been was like thirteenth or fourteenth, and that's what happened last time, and so every year or any of these cycles, because of that geographic equity, we have one project that, and there's a lot of consternation over this, gets moved up above the funding line, and so that project that was number six, that now went to number seven, you can imagine how they feel when they've been basically gypped out of funding, and then to have a legislative body to not only once, but twice, you know, reject this project. I think there will be ramifications, so it's, you know, when you commit to a project, and that's one thing that we did tonight, if you commit to a project, you need to commit to the project. So I do want, so I'm going to be looking, this is just me driving down the road and having those, one of those aha moments, as I left that KRCC meeting, and I was leaving Bremerton, driving past the gateway, the Bremerton Gateway, the multimillion-dollar gateway project, and I was looking at the landscape medians that the city of Bremerton spent millions of dollars constructing. I noticed that they were removing, you know, all but deciduous trees that are living, taking all the ground cover, all the, all the shrubs out, and they're replacing them with very, very expensive rainbow rock. I don't know if you've been to Morrison's lately, but if you get a truckload of seven-eights landscape rock for about a half a yard, that's about thirty bucks, and if you get the, like my wife said, she goes, oh, I want that rainbow rock, that same amount was like a hundred and thirty dollars. So as I was driving out of town and I noticed all this rainbow rock in the median, I just thought, my goodness, for the city of Bremerton to come to the conclusion that they can't manage this landscape median, and they're going to go to that cost and expense to remove everything and put this very expensive rainbow rock in, I just, it just kind of registered with me. So I think at this point, what I'm asking council to allow me to do is, at least, we did a value engineering, or VE, prior to taking Tremont out to add, where we, we actually reduced some of the landscaping and we did some VE-type things, but is, what's happening across the water going to be us in twelve years? Are we gonna, unless we commit to hiring a construction company, or not a construction company, but a landscape company that's going to get into that median and stay on top of it, like stay on top of it, it will, it'll get out of control fast. So we have two options. We either need to commit to, because Public Works does not have the resources to, to manage that, and quite honestly, South Kitsap Boulevard, you know, I designed that whole facility back in nineteen ninety-two, and when that median with the inverted, the swell and the plantings, it looked beautiful, and when Harrison was maintaining that, it looked great, but when Harrison decided to sell out, it very quickly went downhill. And so the plan would be to have both South Kitsap Boulevard and Tremont managed potentially on contract. So that's one option. The other option is, we look at what we're putting in now, and if we want to go, you know, I'm not saying we need to do stamped concrete, because anybody's driven down Wheaton Way, and we certainly don't want to have dandelions growing through cracks on a really ugly median, and I don't think providing projectiles to be picked up and thrown at cars is necessarily good either, but I guess I'm just looking at a knot of heads as whether or not you want me to pursue potentially another VE on the median. I'm not talking about anything from the curb out, because that's outside the traveled way, and it's going to be much easier to maintain, whether we do or, it's, the reason Bremerton obviously has struggled with that is, it's very difficult to get in, other than getting in at night and trying to, to maintain those medians, and so do you want me to pursue looking at options? It's not too late, I mean, there's some of the, we bought a lot of the plants, but we have the ability to restock them if we need to, but this is just conversational at this point. But if, if the council really says, no, we, we love that, that entry look and feel with all that landscaping, then I'll just keep things the way they are.
I, I regularly drive by to- I, I regularly drive by, um, two gateway projects like that. And it's at Borgon that you come off of sixteen. And Gig Harbor has put rock all the way up that, um, that median.
Burnham?
Burn- Burnham, that's the name of it. Um, the other one I drive regularly is Bridgeport Way. And down there through University Place, and they must pay a fortune to keep that maintained.
That's beautiful.
I mean, that, every time I look at it, I marvel at how well it's maintained. So, um, and I've always wondered how the city afforded that.
You know, I agree with Wheaton Way comment. That's the first thing that came into mind, that, you know, is the cap and the dandelions. Speaking for myself, I would entertain, I, different ideas, uh, and, and say bring those back to council. I understand your concerns, and, um, I understand, you know, also trying to do it on a rainy night. At night, trying to keep that, you know, up to speed, or during the day would be just horrendous. So I, I would entertain that, listening to some options.
Okay.
I, I'm wondering if there's low maintenance landscape that could be used, some kind of median that could be used. I, I think of Tacoma and heading on twenty first. And that is awful, you know, I think with, there are some trees in there, if they're not nicely maintained, it's mostly rock and concrete and whatever. It's very desolate looking. This was always supposed to be the gateway to Port Orchard. And, um, I understand the concern, but I'd rather put a little bit of money into maintenance than having it be too desolate.
Right. I mean, there's a term called zero scape, where it's a combination of drought tolerant plants and rocks. Right now, we have a very lush, again, shrubs, ground covers, trees. And, you know, if we, I'm just saying, if, if, if we go forth, I don't want to have us be in the same position twelve years from now, where we're spending a lot of money tearing out what we just put in, so.
I'd like us to look at alternatives, too, and maybe some blended alternatives as well. I mean, when you look at it, it looks really nice. Maybe there's some, some meeting in the middle we can do.
Boxwood?
No.
I'd like to see options, but I know we don't want to be like Bremerton.
What's that?
I would like to see other options, but I'm not fond of doing something just because Bremerton has.
Well, I guess here's, so when you drive through Bremerton, and I'm a Bremerton boy, born and raised, and you look at their Parks and Recreation Department, they manage a lot. And, you know, their plants on Pacific, and when you go across the Minette Bridge, and, I mean, they maintain stuff fanatically, and they have a couple of staff that have been there forever. I mean, my wife comments every time she goes to Bremerton, it's like, why can't your plants like Bremerton's, right? And I, well, they have a Parks and Rec Department, they have staff to do it. If that staff is unable, and that's why it registered when I drove out, if their staff is unable to, that's looked terrible from day, from year three. Other than right there by Kitsap Transit where they have the, all the heather and the cherry trees. But from that point out, well, actually, the median through there is in pretty rough condition, too. So, I mean, for a, a, a city that has dedicated a lot of resources to that sort of right-of-way landscaping, for the gateway to be in that condition, I mean, that speaks volumes to me. That's just, that tells me that they're just throwing their hands up, and we can't manage this. And I think the, I think the reality is, it has to do with access, accessibility. Because you have those lanes, even in the middle of the afternoon, you're talking about setting up traffic control to have a rolling maintenance. And I think that's really why they've not gotten in there to maintain those.
Is there, is there a possibility of service organizations volunteering to maintain them?
No, we would, we wouldn't want to get anybody in that right-of-way. It'd just be a huge liability.
I think it's the perfect opportunity just to li- take a look at it and see what else is out there, what others are doing, and come back for consideration. There's certainly no harm in that, and I'm glad we're out ahead of it. And I think that includes the type of trees that we elected to put in there, and not just what they're gonna look like five years from now, but what they're gonna look like twenty years from now, when you see other trees that are, are too large for the areas they're put in, and they're causing, you know, decay to the, the medians, the roots, and they're having to be pulled out and
Yeah, we do have, we do have root barriers in our design, but, so.
It's a great opportunity to at least look at it before we get too far down the road.
I'm certainly open to looking at alternatives, but I, I wouldn't want to be a penny wise and a pound foolish here. We're gonna be living with this for a long time. And I agree that there are different, uh, landscaping treatments that you can do. And I, I drive that road every day, twice a day. And there are sections that, um, they maintain, they have to, to weed them once a year, and they do have service groups, actually. I don't know what service groups, it's the service, because there are, um, military folks that will volunteer, uh, and I've seen them out there in front of our facility there in Charleston. They go out there once a year, and that's about all it takes. Now, same thing with the landscape median that the city has on, uh, Pacific Avenue between, basically, Burwell and First Street, down to the ferry terminal, and they have landscaping that, essentially, they go in there once a year in the, in the winter. And it's like, I don't know what it's called, it's more like a, a plant that's about this big around that grows grass. Real tall. They go in there once a year, and they cut it down to the base, and that's about the extent of it. So like I said, I, I certainly would be open to it, but I agree with Cindy, this is our gateway. I'd hate to be a penny wise and a pound foolish and really turn it into something that looks rather sterile and almost a dust reel, so.
Yeah, keep it a gateway and not a getaway.
Thank you.
Mr. Crocker?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Mr. Vaughn, you got some good news?
Hey, I think the, uh, the email already went out to you, so this is, uh, this is more for the public's benefit. But we did find out on Friday that we were, uh, designated, two of our three census tracts that we sought for designation under the Federal Opportunity Zone Program are, uh, now officially recognized by the governor and were sent to, um, the federal government. And so there were three census tracts in all of Kitsap County awarded, and we have two of them, Bremerton has the third. And so, um, I feel like that was, that was a very successful application on our competitive, uh, our competitive application. I think Bremerton submitted four competitive applications, and we submitted two. And then there was only, out of those six, there was one awarded, and we got it. And then there are the two set-asides that Bremerton and Port Orchard each got one.
Congratulations, that was great work.
Thank you.
Great work. Sure.
Nothing for me this evening, thank you.
Brandon? All right, um, it is time for citizens' comments for three minutes for, uh, any items that weren't on public hearing tonight. Uh, please state your name for the record when you testify.
Good evening, council members. My name is Teresa Donnelly, and I am a advocate in the community who is passionately concerned about the retail pet sale issue. I want to first start off by just thanking all of you for taking the time to take a look at it and examine the issue. But I also want to express how disappointed I am that the able, issue is being tabled. There have been efforts at the state level, Senate Bill six six two three, which has addressed this issue. So I do encourage you to take a look at it. It was introduced this year, and we will, uh, continue to press on that end. We're also pressing on the county level. So we are attacking this from other fronts, not just to, to address your issue, not just on the city level, but on a state level and on a county, sorry, I'm nervous, on a county level. I also think that, um, one other thing to take a look at when looking at this issue is that we also think that, at least I do personally, that rescues should be regulated. I don't think that should distract from this issue. Um, I think there's a way to do an outright ban, and I encourage you to take a look at it. I encourage you to take a look at all the research that we put into this, and all the work that's been done on this effort. It wasn't just of one breeder, it wasn't just one rescue. I'm sorry, I'm so nervous. It was so many different people that came together to put this together and, and give this information to you. So I do ask that you please take a look at the information that's been posted online and all the information that we've presented to the council, because I believe it was a compelling story. And I believe that this is a preventative measure that will keep these people from coming here. Maryland just today passed this. California's passed this. And these people passed this because there were issues at the grassroots level that were dealt with and handled, and then res- rose to the top. And that's how these things happen. They don't happen at the federal level, come down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. I'm, uh, Dr. Carolyn Zimmers. I'm a veterinarian. Uh, I've practiced in Kitsap County since nineteen eighty-three in Paulsboro. Um, my emergency clinic handles, um, emergencies from three counties, parts of three counties, including, um, Port Orchard. Uh, and during my career, I saw many puppies and kittens that were from puppy mills and kitten mills and, um, from Port Orchard. They come from all over. So, uh, I understand that one of the issues was that there was a concern that this was not a local issue for Port Orchard. But it is a local issue for Port Orchard, because these, uh, people can buy these pets elsewhere, and then they come back to your community. And that becomes a problem, because it causes financial problems for the people that, uh, bu- buy these puppies, because they're sick. And it causes heartache for the families and their little children who have to decide whether to spend money they don't have to treat, or maybe the prospect of taking the, the, their new best friend back to the, uh, the store where they bought it. The other issue that I want to address is health certificates. Health certificates do not protect against this issue. I've done many health certificates during my career. And mostly, it's concerned about zoonotic diseases which pets carry, like roundworms and rabies. And so to get a pet into the, into the, uh, or to go to Canada, or to have a pet come into the state, they need to have a rabies shot. Sometimes they ask to take the pet's temperature so that they won't, um, be actively having a disease process going on. And, um, uh, uh, maybe heartworms for coming into the state of Washington. They do not address where the pet came from, whether it's truly healthy, how it was raised, or anything else. So health certificates do not protect from this horrible, uh, issue of puppies and, uh, coming from, from puppy mills. Last time I was here, um, I talked once, and I tried to explain the issue about how cruel these places are and how the pets suffer. And then when they get here, it's a financial, uh, tragedy for some families who will buy a puppy that is sick. And then they have to decide whether to treat the, this animal, take it back. And we know what happens when they go back. They, they're treated, they're, they're, they're probably euthanized. Um, or, you know, they have to decide this, this issue. And sometimes, in my experience, they've actually decided not to pay their next month's rent, so they can actually treat the puppy. And sometimes the situation is so bad, it's, it's not even a treatable situation. So in my exam room, I've seen really sad situations over this issue. And, um, so it is a, it is a local issue for everyone. And, um, Bainbridge Island, Paulsboro, Bremerton realizes this, they, they passed an ordinance. And, um, I read through this seventy-four page document that was supplied to you, and I hope you read it, because it is a well documented, um, uh, really, uh, uh, well researched. And, um, it has, uh, I could read down here, it's got the Kitsap Humane Society, uh, Bremerton City, City Council member Leslie Douggs, Washington State Representative Sherry Appleton, Shelby Watson, a, a, a veterinarian I personally know, who hi- highly respect, all saying that this ordinance should go through. They're asking you to do this. Another veterinarian, Christine Peters, and then there's, uh, different groups, the, um, the Voice Advocacy. Uh, and, um, the USDA is supposed to, uh, look at these, uh, puppy mills. And they're mostly on the East Coast, I think. And, uh, at one point, somebody asked for a report on, on the, um, because they are supposed to go in and look at these facilities. Well, there's not enough USDA veterinarians to do it, so they hardly ever get looked at. And when they do, the, uh, the criteria is so lax that it's not even about that. So I see my time is almost up. And what I really want to say is, this issue is not going away. We are not going away. This is happening around you, and you either get on the bus gracefully, or look foolish, and you get left behind, because it's happening. So please, please consider this.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lori Johnston, and to add to that, I work part-time at Cookie's Pet Store. And it is a major issue for a lot of people in this town. They buy an animal, and sometimes they are not socialized, so they're aggressive. They are sick, they have many, many health issues that people, they get these pets, they love them, they want to take care of them, and they can't, because it's an astronomical expense. And at this point, we have no stores in Port Orchard that sell puppies. And it seems it would be smarter to make this ordinance now than have something come into this area when all these other cities have said no. They're gonna come here then, and it would be much easier to pass this ordinance and have it in place and keep something from happening. And if the demand for these puppy mill and kitty mill animals dries up, they'll go out of business, and the animals will be much, well, better treated. And that's really all I have to say, I'm just adding to it. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm Margie Moore, still, and I do want to thank you for your consideration and for all the time that you've, that you've given us. And ask you that you consider pulling it off the table. And I also want to invite all of you to please ask, um, for clarification, if there's anything that we can clarify, if there's any of your concerns that we can, um, answer and, or research together. I just think together that we will be able to come to a consensus on what is best for Port Orchard and what is best for the animals. I am an analyst by my day job, and, um, so, you know, numbers kind of interest me. And the, the numbers that I've been able to find from the one local store that sells puppies, they sell about forty puppies, they bring in about forty puppies a month. And so let's call it five hundred puppies a year. So those five hundred puppies, that's sixty-two brood dogs that have to live their life just to create, satisfy that demand. And if we can kind of like slow that demand down to a more humane source with local breeders, these breeders that these animals are coming in, or coming in from out of state. So if we can shift the demand to local breeders, local humane business model, I just think that's better for everybody, and I just ask that you reconsider your decision to table this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak to me?
I was thinking that on your May eighteenth meeting, that you could come up with something that you would send with your legislative representative, um, that she could also come in with so that the state knows that some of the committees are, um, or the communities are concerned about this, and get them working on this issue at the state level at a, you know, and get something through, because they know some cities are, um, becoming more concerned on this. I really think that if you've ever watched a person that has an animal, and if you're an animal lover, you'll do just about anything for your animal until it gets to the point where you can't afford it. And it's a big decision. I just took on an animal that the person died. And, um, it's come down with cancer. And I know that she only has, you know, two to three months to live. But the, going through all the chemo and all of that stuff for her, it would ruin, she wouldn't have a life. So, you know, when you have an animal and it begins to hit you, people still talk about animals that they had ten and twenty years ago, because those because those animals make an impression on, they're like their child. Another thing I wanted to talk about is, no ground cover on your coming into town. Ground cover is just a place for weeds to grow, and you don't have the personnel that can get in there and weed through ground cover. It's a lot of work. Maybe trees, and then cement, trees and cement, and do it that way. Because Bremerton has, it's a shame that they spent all that money to come into Bremerton, and all you have is tall grass growing through all of the ground cover that they have there. It's horrible. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments tonight?
Hi, my name is Tina Meekins. And I hesitated speaking to this because I'm not, I don't rescue puppies and stuff like that. And I know a little bit about puppy mills and things like that. But what I do is I rescue kids. So I have a horse place, I have old senior horses, 32, 38 years old, and they rescue kids, okay? I work a lot with kids with RAD, reactive attachment disorder. And I hate to make the parallels on this, because I am not an expert. But how someone gets reactive attachment disorder is when they're born, they're not picked up. And when they crawl, when a kid, when a baby needs to be crawling, and they don't crawl, the neurons don't fire in the brain properly, and they don't develop empathy when they're not picked up. When they cry, when they don't cry anymore. And then their brains, the empathetic regions of their brains don't develop, okay? So then by the time these kids become teenagers, when they need to be independent, and they do start pulling away, if they haven't bonded with a caregiver at that point, these children will end up, vast majority of them are murderers, sociopaths. They do not play well in society whatsoever. So these children are very damaged. And horses fix that, by the nature of what horses do. That being said, what I do know about puppy mills, very little, and I hesitated to speak to this because I don't want to draw some silly comparisons, but in my mind, it's worth mentioning, is that these puppies are not, they're just like those kids with RAD, reactive attachment disorder. I have seen one puppy mill puppy, I had it. It bit a kid at my place in the face, so I had to get rid of it. Thankfully, somebody rescued it, because I was going to put it down, but the vet couldn't come and do it. So somebody actually took the dog that night for me. That being, I thought I was rescuing that dog. So anyway, my point being is, is that these puppy mill puppies are not socialized properly from birth on. They're taken away from their mothers too soon. I mean, I don't know how, you know, socialized a puppy can be with its mother, but I know it's taken away too soon, and then it's put in a puppy store. It's not, so in my opinion, these puppies, they're not socialized properly. I see it with kids all the time. I'm not too knowledgeable about the puppies, but I do think it's inhumane the way it all happens. So, anyway, thanks.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments tonight? All right, with that, is there any good of the order?